Okay, Angie said she's got 4:30, so let's call this meeting to order. And if you could call her over, please, Angie?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
And Bunting is in Florida.
Hey? John, could you give us a prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to get together tonight, and we ask that you bless our hearts and minds as we consider what's in the best interests of the taxpayers of Grashaw County. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest cities of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn in Michigan. All right. We have one deletion and one add to the agenda. Under K, we're striking the elected officials' salary discussion and adding the Parks Department. Without objection.
Move the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second.
Second.
I heard John knew first. Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close nay? Motion passed. Okay, any member of the public wish to address the commission? Anyone online wishing to address the commission? Hearing nothing, let's move on. Okay. The consent calendar, anybody like to pull anything off the consent calendar to speak separately?
What was the consent calendar?
Motion by Commissioner Bailey to move the consent calendar a second.
All right.
Support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close nay? Motion passed. So, we are on to Administrator's report, yep.
Good evening Commissioners and all members of the public. Great to see you this evening. Much of what we have been working on will be the subject of presentations later in this meeting and or at the first meeting in September. For example, you know that Chris is hammering away at the budget for the next fiscal year. He's going to discuss this with you during, later this evening. And you'll be hearing about it, I'm sure, each meeting until the end of the fiscal year. Sheila, this evening is going to cover some classification and compensation issues. She'll be covering some similar issues at the next meeting on September 6th. So it's a very, very busy time in our, in our office. As I think you know, we are scheduled to enter contract negotiations with GELC and TPOAM. The first with TPOAM is this Thursday in the morning. And with GELC next Thursday, that's the 25th of August in the morning. And we'll be discussing more this, at greater length with you folks in closed session later this evening. Finally, I meet with Tony Miller, our building official, every week. We've reviewed project staffing issues, just anything that we need to discuss. Tony's going to be speaking with you tonight about one such project he would like to, for which he will be seeking your approval. But it occurred to me this afternoon that really there are some, some things that we talk about. I don't often update you on some of these other projects. So I've just selected two for this evening. The Health Department project has been out there. The last, when we last came to you, we had two bids for the work that were just beyond anything that we cared to recommend to you. And we, in fact, recommended that those bids be rejected and that we just let the project sit for the time being, put it on hold. Tony actually has another idea about how to approach the project. He's going to be working with Aaron Losack at Spicer Engineering. And we'll put together some slightly modified specifications. We'll send that back out for bid, and I think that should bring the cost down quite a bit. So there, there's movement there. We continue to think about these projects. When we say we're putting something on hold, it doesn't get entirely forgotten. Similarly, the painting and plaster work upstairs, the circuit courtroom ceiling and the plaster and painting work in the rotunda. We had sent out a request for bids on that project and received no responses. It's pretty specialized work, but we had received no responses. So we were also just letting that one sit till we got some additional ideas. But we are going to send out another bid package here in the next couple of days. And again, at Tony's urging. This time, we're going to target those that do restoration work, not just painters and plasterers, but those that do restoration work. And further, those that specialize in historic structures. So we're going to try that path and see if we are more successful there in at least attracting some contractors who would be interested in the work and are qualified to do that. So those are two projects, just to bring you up to date, that we picked back up and we're moving with some additional new inspiration and ideas. So beyond that, we'll have much to talk about tonight. You'll hear from me again, but that will include the Administrator's report.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. And next we'll move on to the Commissioner's report. John? Anything?
Really, I don't. I don't have anything new for the Airport Committee. Anything I have for Parks, Doug could speak to. The only really new thing I got is Matt has invited me to sit in on a Zoom meeting tomorrow with the broadband company that, I think he invited you too, George. And so I'm going to try to sit in on that. And then I'll be on the negotiating committee on Thursday as well.
Thank you. George?
Well, let's see. I attended the Lafayette Township Board Meeting. I attended the North Star Township Board Meeting. I went on to Wheeler Township for their meeting. That's about it.
Randy, thank you, George. I've been busy with the fair and headquarters and training, and I don't have anything. Sam?
I got North Shade in Fulton last night. I thought anything really happened, and the Chairman of Fulton Board moved down to be the clerk, and then they appointed a gentleman from Perrington to be the Chairman of the Board.
All righty. No questions, we'll move on to new business. John, you want to introduce the first item?
Meter Investment Management. Mike was gonna, oh, Mike is here, and Mike, you're going to give us a presentation on, very good. I'll just hand it over to you.
If you could come forward to here.
Sure, I can plug into here and show some information on the screen, would that be okay? I have no idea.
Last time I did it.
Yeah.
You saying, oh, I'll be honest with you, don't ask if I'm available?
He's not.
Okay.
Time to IT and this stuff.
So you're the expert now?
Yeah.
Look at us.
Would we like to take Tony's issue while they're hooking up? So we can just wait for him? I don't think it would take very long. This would be
You want to move it out?
Okay. Tony, you have something?
Tony Miller here, representing the Buildings and Grounds Department. Part of our capital improvement plan, it was a two-year plan. Originally, we replaced the company's receivables on the, not going on the top. And then we focused on the filler unit. Now we're looking at, I'm looking for approval for what we call Rooftop Unit 3, which is directly behind me. We only had two bids on that. Again, these prices are inflated. I did some research. We waited, finally decided these prices aren't getting any better, and the lead time on this equipment is, is getting longer. It's harder to get this stuff. This was originally approved in the capital improvement plan for a certain amount, which we've exceeded. The two quotes I have, one's from RMS Refrigeration and Mechanical Services from Greenville. They came in at $63,663. The second was J.E. Johnson out of Midland at $71,400. I believe originally, and I worked with Aaron Losack quite a bit on these mechanical units. And it's, I kind of refer to the experts for budget numbers. But these, these numbers have just skyrocketed over the last couple of years. We're all aware of that with what we've seen with the other units. But like I said, it was approved, but I'm asking for the approval again to go ahead and replace that unit at the additional cost. My recommendation would be to RMS out of Greenville. Their reputable company have researched them.
Tony, could you provide the only little bit of good news, which is that one of these folks actually came down in there?
Yeah, when we first received their bids, these two companies were only $200 apart. Little sticker shock, I did some research. I approached them again. Wanted to confirm the price. RMS came back, actually last Monday, about $5,000 less than originally quoted. So I don't know what the reasoning is behind that, but
Were they originally quoted, Tony?
What was that?
Originally quote, what was it? I mean, back
They were both around $69,000.
I mean, back when, our, what would we budget for this, or whatever?
I think 26.
26?
Yeah. That's about these numbers just
I hear you.
Yeah. Yep.
When did we do that? Was it like May, January? You know when the original approval was?
Yeah, yeah.
It's the Capital Improvement Plan, which you, the budget was last summer, actually. Of course, everything's broken loose since then.
Yeah, it's really
Yeah.
It's really got out of hand.
Now, we, we try to put, you know, fairly decent numbers in there. We do do a little bit of work, but everything's just gone nice since then.
If from what I see, it's not getting any better. Materials are still hard to come by, and prices are still steadily, well, they're kind of the same or maybe increasing, so. But the lead time on us is probably going to be 20 weeks. So we can lock it in now.
Be a firm number?
Yes, yeah, this is, yeah.
We're also asking that this be paid from ARP funds. It's been on the list, the lengthy list that I provided you a couple of occasions.
I'm going to approve RMS to do this for $63,000 and some change.
Out of ARP?
ARP funds, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Smith, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman, any discussion? Okay, go ahead, Angie, when you're ready.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We'll get your paperwork drafted up, we'll get it to you to sign. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Tony.
Are we hooked up that you can operate from here, or do you have, we have to have you there? Okay.
Right. Wow.
Yay.
Look like your experts sat down over there. He just pointed to me there.
I see.
So, good afternoon, thank you for having me. Terry has asked me to come in and speak with you briefly about what the role of an investment advisor does, how that role helps to benefit the county, how it's different from financial professionals that the County Treasurer's Office has worked with in the past, and most importantly, what the benefit to you is from a enhanced earnings perspective over what historically has been able to be accomplished. So, little bit of information about Meter. We are a SEC-registered investment advisor, and that is the biggest distinction between brokers and bankers, which have typically been what the Treasurer's Office has worked with in the past. We are a fiduciarity, and that means by contract and by law, we are required to put the county's interests ahead of our own. How is that different from, for example, a broker? You can also get securities from a broker. From a broker, they do not have that fiduciary responsibility. As long as it's within Public Act 20, they can sell you anything that they want to. Basically, whatever generates them the most commission, quite frankly. It's not, it's different with, you're working with an investment advisor. It's a more of a partnership, work together, work on investment strategy, on cash flow analysis, everything that is required and needed to put together a comprehensive investment strategy. Whereas with a bank or a broker, you would simply call them and say, hey, I've got $500,000 to invest, and I want to invest it for six months or a year, something along those lines. So it's much more of a partnership. Meter Public Funds has been around for over 30 years. We have over 300 clients across the country, including about 30 here in Michigan. We work with Calcasas County, Genesee County, the city of Lansing, some entities on both coasts and so forth, so we're, we're all over the place. So, and these are all the services that we can provide to the county as part of that investment advisory relationship. Investment policy review is always the first step with us. We go through and make sure that not only do we understand the investment policy, but if it needs any updating, we'll go ahead and help you get through that, bring it back here to the commission, get that approved, so on and so forth. And then the most important part of the, what we call the right sizing of your portfolio, is we look at your cash flow. And so Chris has already provided me with some, just at account level, monthly balances to get us, and I've got an example of that here, a couple of pages down. But we do not rely simply on you to determine how much you should invest. We help out with that process as well. The reason that's relevant, especially today, is that as anyone who has dealt with banks and in the recent history, will tell you, banks are not keeping up with the marketplace. They're paying a very low rate of return in response, or excuse me, with respect to the interest rate or the earnings credit that they're paying that helps to offset fees that would ordinarily be taken under, or, you know, incurred by the county. So when we do a cash flow review, we take all those things into consideration. We look at what it would take to offset fees, whether it might be worth just paying the fees and earning the money in the marketplace. Because typically, you can earn right now four to five times more by just putting the money out into the marketplace versus offsetting the fees. So for example, if you would have $30,000 worth of fees over the course of a year, we could probably earn $180,000 to $200,000 by taking that money that you're leaving there to offset those fees, putting it into the marketplace, and just paying the difference. So you're still ending up ahead. Okay, we're going to put together an investment strategy. We're going to do trades for you, then we're going to do monthly reporting and review. We're going to provide the board, we're going to provide Terry with a comprehensive review of the portfolio, listing of all the holdings, everything done on your behalf. That's on top of what you'll get from Michigan Bank, which will provide custodial services. So you'll actually get two sets of reports for that. They're a good check and balance against each other. And then compliance monitoring, credit research, all of the commercial paper that we recommend for clients, we do an extensive research on. And then finally, if there are banking or custody issues that the county wants to undertake, we can be of help to that as well. So this is the information that I spoke of that Chris had provided me with the last time we met. So it only goes to May of '22. However, you can see that there are definitely trends there. September of '21, I believe, is when you received your first ARPA payment. That's why that balance has jumped up. And that money has to be spent within a certain amount of months. So that would certainly be taken into consideration when we build the investment strategy for you. Now that being said, we typically start at about 80% of your low point for the year. So taking those ARPA funds into account, if you look at the last 12 months, May would have been about your low point. And I, again, don't have yet that information, I'll get it from Chris, as to whether that month, that balance may be a little bit lower for June and July. But that will help us to determine what the ideal starting point is for a comprehensive investment strategy. So here's the long and the short of it. We would take about 80% of your combined balances. And again, we're looking at all these funds, this is, I got this from Chris again, general fund, delinquent tax fund, COVID recovery, tax sale fees, and residence denial funds. And Chris and Terry and I would go through, this is just an example of the process that we go through. We would go through and say, well, maybe this fund shouldn't be included. Or, you know, maybe, obviously, the delinquent tax funds are going to need to be kept separate. We'll do that, but it will still be part of the overall strategy. Maybe there will be different cash flow requirements for the delinquent tax funds than for the operating funds. And again, we'll do all of that with you on your behalf. So, but if we were to take all those funds, add them together, that would give us, as of May, about $13.3 million, as for those five balances were. We were to take 80% of that, $10 million, 10.6 million, and invest it in everything allowable under Public Act 20, which is what the county is allowed to invest in, Treasuries, Agencies, A1, P1 Commercial Paper, and Michigan Municipal Securities. As of this week, we would be able to produce a portfolio for you that would generate 3.34% in interest annualized. So that would end in a net interest earnings of about $350,000 a year. The maturity distribution schedule you see here, part of the philosophy of an investment strategy is that we know things change. Things are going to change on a year-by-year basis. Capital projects may come up, the ARPA funds that we spoke about, those are going to have to be spent. So even if, and they're not, but even if the investments were as far out as five years, we're earning the most, we still wouldn't put them all the way out for five years because you are going to have liquidity requirements. Things are going to change over the course of five years, and we want to make sure that that investment strategy reflects that need for periodic liquidity. So this is services that we are going to be able to provide for you, going to bring you onboard. What we do for our initial investments tonight, that's a long list. Terry's got a hard copy of it, if anybody's interested in it. But basically, we look to start a partnership with the county. We look to be an asset to Terry and to her office so we can help them to not only increase their investment income, but to minimize the time that she has to spend working on investments and be able to lend that expertise and that experience to the county as their partner. And then there's all the unlegal stuff, so. Questions?
For the projected $350,000, what would be the fees on that, or is it?
That's why I said 350, that, the screenshot about 357. Our fees are 10 basis points on assets under management, so it would be about $10,000 to $12,000 a year. Assuming that we were to invest that entire $12 million.
Mike, in your opening comments, I think when you were on page one, you were talking about analyzing the fees and analyzing the interest income. And I, you said something about $30,000 worth of fees and $180,000 worth of income. When you were talking about those fees, were you talking about your management fee of 10 basis points? Or were you talking about other fees in addition to that management?
Other fees. But what I was talking about were your bank fees that you're currently paying. The bank charges you per item, per deposit, per check that you write, or payroll that they run. You know, you pay for financial services one way or another, and the bank charges you for those things. What we need to recommend to clients is that they have an earnings credit analysis done. And Terry, remind me, are you under an earnings credit now, or are you getting an interest rate or both?
We are getting
Okay, so that's one way to do it. One way that they do it is it's an earnings credit, and what that will do is it will offset fees. The other thing is that the interest rate generates interest, but then that helps to offset the fees. So what we will do is, we will do an analysis of the fees that you're paying to the bank. The fees that, excuse me, the interest that you're generating at the bank. Because most entities, most public entities like to keep assets in the bank to keep their fees as low as possible. We're, we're in a unique situation right now where, as you saw from the interest rate that we're able to produce with, and we're talking the most plain vanilla of investments, US Treasury bonds, fully backed by the US government. Things like that, that we can earn over 3%. So a lot of clients here in 2022, they're taking a look at what they're keeping in the bank versus what they could earn in the marketplace, and just saying to the bank, send us a bill because we're going to do something else with that money, and we're going to keep the difference. We're going to keep that net return versus just leaving money with the bank and either earning their very low earnings credit or their very low interest rate.
You do not provide banking services yourself. Do you make recommendations about where to do the banking at?
Yes, if you see here, the Banking and Custody, which is the last line, in the event that the county decided it were wanting to review its services or do an RFP, we can certainly be a resource to help with that.
I would like you to talk a little bit about credit research and talk about the interest rates available on commercial paper and what commercial paper is. And I'd like you to talk about how you guys narrowed the focus during times of financial stress and
Sure. Commercial paper, for anyone that does not know, is short-term debt of corporations. Michigan law allows public entities to invest in that short-term debt out to a limit of 270 days. Anything longer than that is considered a corporate bond, which is not legal for investment. There are grades, credit grades, meaning the safety and strongness, if you will, of the individual corporations. Okay? Michigan public entities are allowed to only invest in the top two grades. The investments that we use for our clients are only utilizing the very top grade, A1, P1. That's the very highest credit rating you could get for commercial paper. What John's referring to is that we further take that list. Currently, there's about 200 A1, P1 commercial paper issuers. We further take that list, and we narrow it down through our own credit research, meaning we have an onsite, in-house credit research team where we apply our own stringent requirements to that credit research process so that we are making sure that we pick out the very best of the best for our customers, our clients. The incident that John was referring to was that at the beginning of COVID, because there was so much uncertainty going on, there were so many things that we just were not sure of. We took our list and we narrowed it down from, typically from 200 to 100. We typically use about half of the issuers that are out there. However, when COVID hit, we went from 100 issuers down to five. Because we were that concerned at the time about the potential creditworthiness of all of these companies that were still issuing commercial paper. And so the list that I'm referring to is our approved list, meaning we have a credit committee, and they do the research and they approve or deny any issuers on that list. And then the investment team, when they go to place funds for clients, they're only allowed to use those issuers that are on that list. And so for about a year and a half, we only had five. It started opening up a little bit more, six. Now I think we're back up to 20 or 30 that, that we're using. And again, it isn't so much the creditworthiness of the rest of those corporations as it is the availability. A lot of them are technically on the list, but they haven't issued commercial paper in, in quite a while. Typically, we use about seven or eight regular commercial paper issuers. Again, all A1, P1, which to the best of my knowledge, in the history of A1, P1 commercial paper, there's never been a default on a commercial, piece of commercial paper that's rated. Leslie, our credit standards even go beyond and above that. Make sure that we're ensuring that it's as safe as we can make it.
Who's your Where's your, excuse me, company corporate headquarters out of?
Corporate headquarters is in Dublin, Ohio. We also have offices here, obviously. We have offices in Austin, Texas, and offices in Long Beach, California. But we're all over the country. We go wherever we're needed. We have customers and clients in Louisiana, Arizona, Pennsylvania, Ohio and Michigan, obviously, Texas. I'm always leaving a couple out, California. Um, so we're, we're all over the country.
What's your Michigan office?
Uh, Lansing, downtown Lansing.
You mentioned you do this for really three or four entities in Michigan or?
About thirty entities in Michigan, yeah.
How liquid is this paper? I mean, how liquid is it if you have?
Well, liquidity is a great question. And let me address this for a moment if I could. The reason for the cash flow, sorry, let me go back to here for a minute. The reason that we go through the cash flow analysis is because as government is a service industry. And so roughly seventy five to eighty five percent as an industry of your budget is payroll. And so that's very easy to predict. So we know, generally speaking, how much money you're going to need each month. So as we go through that process, liquidity becomes less of a concern. Now, it's always going to be a concern. We're all about safety, liquidity and yield in that order. Okay, so once we do this cash flow analysis and we determine what that eighty percent is, again, those ARPA funds are going to have to be taken into consideration, but for the purposes of this conversation, we're just going to assume that they're could be held in perpetuity. So if we've been able to determine for the last twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months that, for example, you've never gone below ten million dollars. Okay, well, we can take eight million of that ten million and invest it from one year out to five years with a pretty high degree of confidence that you won't need at least two or three million of that. So if you look at here at the maturity distribution chart, you'll notice that we take money and we put it in each of what we call buckets, maturity buckets. Zero to one year, one to two years, two to three years and so forth. And so part of the process of being an investment advisor is having regular conversations with the treasurer and the finance director. So they can pass along information to us about decisions that are made here about the potential need for those funds. Okay, this is not a one and done. This is a partnership. So if in the event of that capital project were to come up, or there were something that were uh, planned that had to be taken out of operating funds or so forth. Typically, we're going to know about those things six, twelve, maybe even eighteen months ahead of time as the conversations begin. Terry can pass that along to me. Hey, we're thinking about building a new firehouse. Or we're thinking about building a water treatment plant and we need to pay a million dollars of that out of the general fund. Well, as we go through these quarterly conversations, we let the investment team know, hey, we're going to need to have a million dollars of that set aside when it comes up for maturity. It needs to be then available. Now, that being said, from a, you asked about liquidity. All of these securities are liquid from a standpoint of they can be sold in a day in, if there was a need. Okay, so typically the, you see here at the top, the two point six million dollars, that's going to be your liquid cushion. That's going to be the amount that's kept in a liquidity reserve vehicle rather than in these longer term securities. But a water main breaks. There's an actual emergency where we literally need money overnight. Yeah, we can raise those funds overnight. You may not earn what we thought and projected you to originally earn on those. But we can raise those funds if needed.
When you look at the twelve million dollars, how much ARPA money you have figured in there?
Um.
I don't think you've got our second ARPA payment.
I do not. Yeah, no, that was as of May when I met with John and Terry and Chris. And so, um.
I think.
I think it was about, I want to say about three million.
Yeah, I think it's about three and a half is all he has.
And again, this is an example of the process that we go through. This is not a concrete investment recommendation. Once Terry and Chris are able to provide me with more information as to what the planned expenditure of those ARPA funds are, these maturity distribution buckets that you see, those will get adjusted. Everything that we do is customizable. And that's one of the things that we take great pride in is that we're not trying to force you into a model that we think is most beneficial from an interest rate standpoint. We want to make sure that those liquidity requirements, whether it's for ARPA expenditures, capital projects or anything else, are met without having to incur additional, um, expenses or having to deal with potentially even taking a loss on an investment because, um, that need was unexpected. So we try to be proactive and forward looking and forward thinking with respect to all of these decisions that we make um, in partnership with, with Terry and Chris.
The bulk of our ARPA funds are spent. I mean, we've already committed.
Spent or delegated.
Delighted.
Have the money. Yeah, we haven't doled out a lot of that money yet.
Right, but it could, but the bulk of it could happen tomorrow. I mean, you could do a lot too late. Seats come in tomorrow.
Sure.
And we're paying off the receipts. We're not, when we've given somebody a community money, they've got a receipt for that project. So when that receipt is coming, we're in tune to pay it off fairly quick.
And again, that would be simplicity itself to just either take those ARPA funds out or just incorporate the second payment and, uh, invest them as you see here in our, oh, that doesn't work on the white screen, sorry. Um, we would take the ARPA funds, for example, and just put those in the one to zero to one year maturity bucket. This nine month commercial paper right now is earning as of yesterday about three seventy-five. Okay, so we could take that three or four million dollars, even if it's going to be next year, but within twelve months and earn a really good rate on it um, in the short term. And as you're all aware, I'm sure, any investment earnings from the ARPA funds, the county gets to keep.
I guess my thought on them ARPA funds is that we don't know when that bills are going to come. I mean, we could get a two million dollar bill tomorrow from five entities that have had their projects finished.
We also talked about liquidity, right?
Yeah.
You can put it in there. If we had to take it out, we can still take it out, correct?
Yeah, sure, we're going to pay fees on it, put it in, and then we're going to, and we know we're going to need this money probably within, I would think within a year, a year and a half. I think we're going to pay six and a half million dollars of that out probably. I think now we're.
Isn't he saying that, uh, nine months, uh, are paying three point something?
Correct.
Well, I just need to think, you money guys need to think about that because nine months, we could spend six million dollars. We've, we've committed a little over, more than six and a half million dollars out of our seven and a half million, that's my understanding.
Well, and this number, as, as John said, does not, um, include the second ARPA payment, which you've received now. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Second, okay, so we've got all of that.
You got it before we got it.
Right.
I mean, it's not gone, we're still holding it, but.
Sure. Sure. And, and I would, uh, I direct your attention to the zero to one year bucket, which is two point six million dollars and the cash liquidity reserve of two point six million dollars. And that's five point two million. On, and, and again, as I said, these buckets, if you will, this distribution of maturities is totally customizable. This is not a mutual fund. This is not something that's set. This is simply an example. This is what we call our core strategy. Meaning this is the strategy that based on the marketplace and what we know as commonalities to public entities across the country, this is what would work best for them in a perfect ideal situation. Now, that being said, there's no government entity whose cash flows and cash flow requirements are perfect. And so that's why we customize each of these. So in, in your case, Mr. Smith, our proposal would probably be rather than twenty-two and a half percent in the one to two and two to three, we would take and maybe raise that zero to one to thirty percent or even thirty-five percent to make sure that those ARPA funds were available for you when they were needed. And then that would reduce those initial investments a little bit further out by the same amount. And then again, Terry and I and Chris would review those each quarter. We'd make investment recommendations. This will also change as the market changes. Okay, we're starting to see a lot of indicators that interest rates may be heading down by the end of next year, if not sooner. And so we will adjust, again, that's part of what working with an advisor is, rather than a broker or a banker. We're going to try and give you as much insight as we can into where the markets are and what would be best from a standpoint of structuring your investment portfolio so that not only does it meet those liquidity requirements, but it also takes into what we're seeing in the marketplace. So this has changed a number of times in, in the, the five years that I've been with METER.
Is, is your load up front, an upfront load?
We do not have a load. We have a standard fee.
Your fee upfront?
Uh, the fee is billed in arrears and can be done either quarterly or monthly.
So your three point three four percent weighted average yield, that's with two point six million in cash. Two point six million in cash theoretically yielding zero.
Correct. However, cash vehicles are now earning about two percent.
Oh.
So that two million, that two point six million, and they will probably continue to go up, although they will continue to stay behind what a structured portfolio would provide, excuse me, simply because that's the nature of short term investment vehicles. As they, in a, in a rising interest rate environment, they lag behind because we can go farther out. I just quoted that commercial paper rate. The short term investment vehicles, the cash liquidity vehicles are two percent. They're on ninety-eight percent commercial paper. So they're entirely made up of commercial paper. However, they're lagging a hundred and seventy-five basis points behind what we can get commercial paper right now. So eventually they'll get up to that point. If interest rates don't start heading down, they will eventually get up to that point. But from our perspective, it makes more sense to invest that money now for a year, for nine months and capture that three seventy-five rather than waiting for interest rates to go up. And as I said before, this is a constant evaluation process. This is not a one and done. We'll be having regular conversations. I'm available to come here for board meetings. I'm right down in Lansing. Terry and Chris and I will have regular meetings. They can pass along information to us with respect to, uh, what the determination as to when the ARPA funds need to go out, what the determination needs to be, and in turn will pass back to them that they will approve before we enact them, any changes to this maturity distribution schedule or to the asset allocation schedule. There was a point in time in twenty eighteen where we were putting about seventy percent of client money a year and under because we were in a steadily rising interest rate environment. And we just rode that interest rate, um, change up. So at that point, you saw what this would have been, would have been seventy percent in the zero to one year. Okay, it may change differently if we go into a recession, if interest rates change or when they change, that maturity distribution will change as well.
Have we, anybody in our group talked to these other communities? I mean, have somebody talked to the city of Lansing or the other communities?
Calcasca County, you know, we just.
Six, well, the agreement was, um, about nine months ago, but we started doing some investments for him about six months ago. I think I sent you a list of references too, Terry.
Terry, if you're going to say something, you can come up to the mic. Mike, do you know what our weighted average yield is right now?
I do not. I could determine that if I had an up to date investment portfolio. I could get back to you on that.
I think it's well less than one percent, isn't it? Well less.
I think so too. Where's the bulk of the cash at? I mean, I know we got them four or five accounts, like Raymond James stuff or whatever they're showing us. But I don't know what we had money and what we didn't have money. We've never got, we were, you know, thing every month.
Yeah.
How are we doing on that?
I, I'm thinking commercial bank is where we got the bulk of the money. But those two investment accounts aren't, neither one, neither one is a gigantic proportion.
I spoke with five different entities that METER is in agreements with, um, city of Lansing, Calcasca, there was a couple of different school districts, and they all were very pleased with the work that METER has done with them. I, I got no negative responses.
So any other questions? John, are we looking to go forward with this or where are we at?
Just going to say Terry, uh, so I was going to plug to Terry and say, Terry, do you have a recommendation? I know, I let her walk all the way back.
I do have a recommendation. I would like to enter into or continue with serious conversation with Mr. Fo from METER. Um, take a look at what he's got for the analysis for the county and, um, and go forward from there. We have not done this specific to, uh, our needs with like the ARPA funds and, and things like that. So that's where I would like to go.
So you're recommending no action this evening?
Correct. Yes, I would like.
Go forward and bring it back to us.
I, I kind of agree with that. I, I guess I'd like to have you look at our, our financial situation. And maybe kind of give us an idea really what you would expect us to earn, where we're at today. We were, uh, a few months back, we really wanted to see every month, uh, something from a financial institution that would say, here's what you have. This is what you've done. And, and that hasn't come our way yet. So I would look at some of them. I mean, if we're going to look at this, I'd have a look at our situation to see this is what you're earning today. You're getting this much money and it averages this much for your funds. Um, I'd like to maybe have you look at what we can invest and be safe to invest to, uh, with our ARPA money because I don't know if you, we've committed this six and a half million or a little more than that now. We probably only have about eight hundred thousand left for county projects, like sixty thousand we just spent tonight. Um, we've given it away to our communities. And our communities are out there doing projects and they've been doing projects for probably six months, I would imagine, you know, so pretty soon those bills are going to start rolling in. I don't think Chris is paying a lot of money out of that cash now, but I think that's something that you would need to talk to him about kind of what, what is committed out there, what it, does he think the timing that that cash is coming? So we don't tie a lot of cash up and we still pay these folks because we made those commitments to those communities. Um, I, I, it's kind of what I like to see. And then when you looked at their bottom dollar and said, and I know you can't guarantee anything, but if you said the rate is today, if you had this much in there today, this is what you'd do today. We understand tomorrow it could change. At least I understand tomorrow it could change up or down or sideways, whatever. But I, I, I guess I'd just really like to have you put an overlay on what we have, what we can commit to. And what you think we could do as a certain day, you know, just or a short timeframe or six, six days ago, when it was, you know, for a week or a month or whatever, you know. If, that's what I'd kind of like to see if you have to go forward with this.
I agree. Something a little more specific for the.
To us.
And, and, yes, and to us. And, um, also the reporting, he said, that would come on a monthly basis. Um, if we did decide to go this route. So it would be specific and, um, and tell everything that's going on with, with the investments and operating all of this stuff.
One other question, when, when you're buying a treasury, is it your company buying the treasury? I mean, you are a, are you a licensed broker to do that too?
We are not.
Who, so you would have somebody?
We are a registered investment advisor. Technically speaking, anyone can buy treasury. You don't need to be a broker to buy treasuries.
So something we'd be investing in, you don't need to be a broker to do that?
No, sir.
Okay.
A registered investment advisor, we do hundreds of millions of dollars worth of trades every week. And one of the advantages of working with an advisor is that, for example, if we were to buy five hundred thousand dollars worth of treasury on your behalf, we would in all likelihood be buying five million or fifty million for all of our other clients at the same time. And the, the bigger the trade that you do, the better a price that you get, which is then. And the, the bigger the trade that you do, the better a price that you get, which is then because you're only paying us a fee. We're not charging you commissions, we're not brokers. That, that benefit is then passed along to our clients in the form of our gifts.
For what you buy. It makes sense.
So we're looking for a motion to move forward, have Terry move forward and bring final approval back to us, right? Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lammern. We have a second.
I, I second that.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Uh, any further discussion? Probably roll off, right? We don't need, well, let's go ahead then, I think. Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. O's nay. Motion passed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next uh, Parks Department.
Yeah, I'd like to quickly give you a handout. Again, my name's Doug Yost. I was in front of you on August first uh, uh, at your meeting. I'm the chair of the Gracia County Parks and Rec. Uh, the Gracia County Parks and Rec have met. Uh, we're proposing a revision uh, to the request that we're putting into the county commissioners. Uh, I also did meet with your human resource department uh, on August fourth. Uh, got a very nice uh, uh, job description and also a payment schedule for that job, you know, but I met with Sheila, very nice gal, very informed. But if I could hand this out to you, uh. Previously on August first, uh, we had requested a wage increase from sixty thousand to sixty-five thousand dollars, which was an eight point three percent increase. Sixty thousand dollars was in error. This was taken off of a budget number that we had uh, in the, it was not accurate. Okay, hence I was informed of that by the human resources department, Sheila Barnaby. Uh, currently the Parks and Recreation Director is compensated twenty-nine forty-four per hour. Uh, if you break it down on two thousand eighty hours in a uh, in your work year, okay. Uh, I had quoted twenty-eight uh, eight, twenty-eight eighty-eight, okay. Uh, this would make the annual wages right now sixty-one to thirty-five. The Gracia County Parks Board is requesting an increase of five percent. To take it to thirty dollars and ninety-one cents per hour, annual compensation is sixty-four to ninety-seven. If approved, we would ask if this increase uh, in compensation commence on nine one.
Questions?
Doug, I would like to table this. Um, and I would like to table this uh, just simply because we've got union negotiations coming up next two Thursdays. We have uh, a report coming up for elected officials uh, compensation coming up. And uh, I would kind of like to bundle everything all together at once. I don't want to set a precedent one way or the other uh, going into all these other discussions.
And I guess my question would be, what precedence would that be? Your collective bargaining unit, this group of individuals is not involved with that collective bargaining unit.
Every single uh, department head would be likely to come in and ask for a deviation from the salary scale on which department heads are paid. I think that's the, the more likely precedent. But also if there's a five percent increase given here, and we had covered this last time. There's a five percent increase given here, our union folks are going to come in and say, hey, you know, door's open to five percent. So um,
Okay.
Those are the kinds of.
I understand that Tracy. Okay, so are we saying that we are going to paintbrush the department heads and the collective bargaining units? And if they get a hypothetically two-three-three, then that's what department heads are going to get.
Historically, this board has decided to do that, but that is decided year by year.
Okay, see, and that's kind of why I'm here, you know. It's for that. I'm, I'm really not here to try to defend or, you know, deny the uh, the collective party. I'm here for the department head, you know.
We, we, we generally look after and discuss all department heads as a group. Have them all on a particular salary scale. They all get step increases on their anniversary date. I don't know that Pete has topped out. They all often get the increases negotiated with the union. So like department heads are not uh, overlooked uh, for.
Okay.
Regular and, and appropriate increase.
Okay. Done as long as I understand what the, you know, the gist of the whole deal is.
All right, well, I hear no one making a motion and I can't make one, so we're gonna agree to table this until a couple of weeks.
Okay, I, I, I guess I want to be real honest. I don't think I even say to a department head, we're gonna give you five points. I don't care if it's in a couple of weeks. I mean, I think there's a budget set. There's a budget set at the end of the year. We're coming up to budget time right now. You know, and, and we set a new precedent, first of October, we start next year. I, I, it's no different than, than this young lady coming and saying, I think our department's heads ought to have five percent too next week. Or I just, I don't know how you can just do that right in the middle of it. I mean, we have a plan of sort of steps, there's steps that they get, you know, I don't, like you say, I don't know if he's topped out. I don't really know anything about his wages. If he's topped out, he'll get a step on his anniversary date, he'll get a raise. I don't know why. I, I don't know why I would want to look at this again in, in two weeks and say, okay, now what do we get to do? You know, we've almost kind of committed that we're gonna take another look at it. I don't know. We have a procedure in place that it does that for all of the departments, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe you're feeling that way and just not saying it. I don't know, but where you at? Well, it's George, you've been here a hundred years, you know.
Well, in my opinion, Pete is an employee of the county. And all department heads in the county, although may be not treated equally to what they do, they're all treated fairly within the county system. And that's, and as long as Pete's in the county system, I think he's been treated fairly up to this point, and I have no desire to make it any different. So, you know, I don't, I, 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 I wouldn't agree to that, so. Just wouldn't happen. I can't single out department heads. We don't do that here.
Alrighty, so are we ready to move on then? That's a, John, you have anything?
I don't have anything else, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, next on the agenda is uh, need to set a public hearing, I believe, for the budget.
So that I can get it posted in the paper?
Yeah, so we need a motion to uh, set the uh, public hearing for the budget for next year.
Supposed to be set for September twentieth?
September twentieth, I'm seeing here.
And make a motion that we would uh, set the public hearing?
Motion by Commissioner Bailey. We have a second. Second, second by Commissioner Lammern. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I assume that that's September twentieth at four-thirty and that's a part of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we heard that. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. O's nay. Motion passed. And then we have a.
That gives us another meeting after?
Yeah.
You know, we have one.
He's a second meeting in September.
The second meeting in September, okay. So we should have it pretty well put together by this.
Yes, and you'll, you'll hear a bit tonight. You'll hear quite a bit on the sixth of September.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. Okay, so we have a zoning board of appeals vacancy, it looks like.
There's a memorandum in your packet, I believe, and it explains that uh, Mark Raifrap had served as a planning commission member of the zoning board of appeals. He is no longer with the planning commission, so the planning commissioner is recommending that uh, Elquen, Lincoln, Keon be the planning commission uh, appointee to the zone, the board of appeals.
I'd move that.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lammern. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. O's nay. Motion passed. Okay, we're on to uh, Washington Township. They have a proposal.
And your cane, would you?
Hate to bring the cane. I got a good place to hang it.
This proposal, and I appreciate you taking the time. Um, this proposal is similar, actually it's the same one that I presented on May ninth. At that time, at that time, we, there was no more funds being provided uh, from the ARPA funds uh, to the municipalities. I became aware of, of, of a program, uh, the Heroes Program that, that is going to be going towards veterans and uh, to, to, to say the least, I was very miffed. Um, I was under the impression, and, and I'll say one thing here, just to clarify myself, communication is a wonderful thing. I was very miffed. Uh, I, I am a veteran. I'm a, I'm a fifty percent disabled veteran, even though I do carry a cane. I'm a retiree and I am all about everything for the veterans. And uh, back in May, when I presented this preso- this uh, proposal to you, we were, as a township, under the impression that we would be, if, if funds became available, top of the list. And I think that that is still the case. I have had uh, conversations with Commissioner Smith and with Commissioner Bailey. Uh, they both provided very in-depth understanding to me as to why the Heroes Program was funded, the way that it was funded. Um, there was some uh, misunderstanding on my part and miscommunication on my part, and that's why I, I, I say tongue-in-cheek that I was very miffed. Um, as I understand it, there is still a procedure in place that if funds come back to the county that, that we will still be considered uh, as, as one of the recipients of funds that come back. And I just, I, I kind of jumped on the agenda because maybe it was kind of a heat of the moment. Uh, I wanted to and I, and I, again, tongue-in-cheek, poke you in the eye. I was, I was upset at the time. But uh, with conversation with this, some of your members, um, they reached out to me and, and, and understood where I stood or where, why I was feeling the way I did, and it explained it very much to me. Um, and I very much appreciate that. Uh, so this is more of a reminder, I guess, more than anything else, uh, that we would like to be considered for funds in the future. We are obtaining uh, estimates uh, to do and, and various things that we would like to do with our township hall. Uh, some of the things that we have on here, the, the electrical update, if you have the packet in front of you, uh, that has been pretty much completed. Um, and that had been paid for by the township. So, you know, we're still looking at adding some other offices and so on and so forth. Um, I know that there are township halls within the county that are in not as good a shape as what we have, and there are a lot that are in much better shape than what we have. So we are kind of the median and, but we're looking to do what's best for the residents. And, and for people that utilize that township hall. So I guess uh, in closing, I'd like to again, say my appreciation for the, for the open communication with the commissioners. And just kind of keep me on your radar and we'll move forward as we, as we can. And, and then if there's any questions for me.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I appreciate your communications with us.
All right. Glad I got a smile today instead of a problem.
All right, next on the agenda is uh, unfinished business, a classification compensation study.
And Chair Sheila will be um, doing the bulk of the presentation this evening on this topic, but I, I'd like to offer some introductory comments. Um, explaining freely why we're back on this subject. You may recall that many months ago, Sheila and I presented uh, to this board uh, of information about classification compensations, what they are, why they are uh, necessary, why they're important, when they ought to be done, and so forth. And we asked that this board approve a study. Um, approve uh, having a study done uh, for the non-department, non-executive class employees here in Gracia County. You authorized us to solicit proposals from vendors and then to come back to you uh, to discuss whether you then, seeing those proposals, wanted to go forward at all. Um, we did indeed issue an RFP, we received eight proposals. We assembled a representative group to review the proposals. And we submitted the recommendations to this board. During that discussion, as I just got a little excited and plowed ahead, during that discussion, Commissioner Smith very politely reminded me that what our charge was. And that was to do the RFP, look at the proposals, and then bring it back to you for a discussion of whether you wanted to do a study at all. Uh, again, I just got a little excited and charged ahead. Additionally, during that um, that presentation, uh, you posed questions about other vendors and um, uh, to be perfectly uh, blunt, I couldn't answer your questions and I should have been able to answer your questions. In the end, you voted against doing the study and I can hardly blame you based on the presentation that you got. Uh, I am asking for your leave tonight for us to present the issue again. This time being true to the task that you uh, gave us, which was, is to provide information that will allow you to decide if you want to proceed with the study at all. And if so, to discuss the vendors with you with the goal of gaining your approval for and of a decision of whether to do the study. So if we may proceed, following more um, correctly, the task that you gave to us, Sheila is prepared to proceed. So I guess my first question to you is, do we have the, to make this presentation to you?
I have no objection.
You're asking for permission to bring the bids back again?
No, I'm asking permission, permission for Sheila to do the presentation tonight and to do it the way I should have done it a couple of months ago. But you, but this board made a decision, no, and I'm recognizing that. And I'm recognizing that you might not want to hear this again. I'm simply presenting to you why it is we brought it back. It's an important study, but more than that, I don't believe that I met my obligation to fully inform you and to stick to the task as it was assigned. So if you are willing then to hear it again, we would appreciate that. If not, we respect that, understand, and we will go away.
I'd like to hear it again.
I guess proceed.
Sheila is then prepared um, uh, to proceed then. Uh, she put about half the slides into the packet for you to give an idea where we're going. Uh, she will review again, some of the basics about what class comp studies are, are, are what they are for. And she will pause at the appropriate time for you to make that uh, initial decision. So uh, thank you for your willingness to listen. And Sheila, um, you have a very quiet audience. So thank you for your willingness to listen, and Sheila, you have a very quiet audience here, so you'll, I'm not sure how to take that. Okay, good evening, commissioners, thank you for allowing us to present this information again. So, Matt, can I just move it, or do you need to?
You should just be able to move it.
We get to point. Change your minds, commissioners, I guess.
Need Terry back here.
Yeah.
There you are, she's still here, hiding in the corner.
I'm not sure how to get that black thing out of there, but, okay. We can work around it. Okay, so what is a class comp study? A lot of this stuff is going to just be a review, we've gone over this a couple of times now. But it is essentially the evaluation of the position, and that is based on their job description, the current pay schedules, and other information. Excuse me, when needed, new job descriptions are created as well. No, this truly is about the position, it is not about the person, we do not evaluate the person in these positions. Some of the evaluation factors, education and experience, the judgment and the independence of action, internal and external communications, if the person has, if the position has any supervisory or management responsibilities, the complexity of the job. And that, that one's important because it's not the amount of papers that cross the desk, it is truly the complexity of the position. Responsibility for rights, well-being, and safety of others, the amount of technology use, the impact on programs, services, and county operations, documentation, as well as the working environment. So they do look at whether it's in the office, or whether you're out in the field, whether it's loud, or whether it's quiet. Some compensation factors that are determinations. They compare one position to another internally. In addition, they compare our community to like communities, and they compare positions within our industry, so also in the public sector. Why are studies important? Studies ensure that positions meet the requirements of Fair Labor Standards Act. For example, are the positions subject to minimum wage and overtime laws? They'll look at that for us. They'll verify to make sure that position descriptions are compliant with Americans with Disabilities Act, which is quite important, and also for equal opportunity categories, they'll make sure that they're appropriately assigned. We do, every year, we do send that information into the federal government. In addition, wages will be realigned appropriately. There will be a limited number of corrections that come before you to make these decisions throughout the year for fairness to the staff, and then also the ability to retain and to, to hire quality people in the current market. What are the risks? There are budget implications if the positions are evaluated as though that they are being unpaid, underpaid, and also employees may not accept the results of the survey. Industry recommendations, it is recommended that every three to five years, one of these studies would be done. The industry reality is about every five, about every seven to ten years, some positions are done more frequently. Now, this looks back at the history, and I know that we've talked quite a bit about this. The last time that there was a full wage study done for Grasha County was in nineteen ninety-seven. In early two thousand and sixteen, there was a classification tool that was created, and that's what we use. So when somebody comes before you today and they want to reclassify a position, we do use that tool to say what grade they are supposed to be on. But as, as far as a comprehensive study goes, it's been since the nineties. So, as Tracy mentioned, what we were asked to do, we were we were to issue a request for an RFP and solicit vendor interest qualifications and costs. We were to create and facilitate a work group to go over those RFPs, and then you guys are to make the decision whether we move on with the next step. So this is where Tracy said I was going to stop, and I will.
This is, this is where we are. With the information that you have, and this is a refresher of the presentation that was done, you can discuss, make a decision, or if it will be helpful, we can, Sheila will go through the proposals that were submitted and comments from the work group, if that will help you also, that will identify the vendors, where they're based, what the cost of their proposal was. We defer to you and look to you for direction as to how you would like to proceed from here.
Question?
Yes.
We have struggled for several years now with department heads coming and wanting raises for their people.
Yes.
This person is going to do this now, and this person is going to do that now. Will this help any way mitigate that so that we can do it as our commissioners would like to do it at budget?
It absolutely would, because it should align everyone where they should be, and it will be based on the jobs that they're doing now, rather than trying to compare to something that was created years ago.
Because I'm getting really upset with the whole process of having to decide in the middle of a year, or starting out a year, or whatever. I, I'm a budget man. And if you don't have it in the budget, it doesn't work for me. So that's where I look at it, so, I don't know. I, I just, I'm all for something that's going to help us make better decisions.
And that's what this is for, truly.
How will it be different if we're halfway in the year, and a department head comes and says, Ms. Smith is now doing this job, and we need to give her another step in the classification and a raise, and she's moved up to there, she's cross-trained. How will it change anything that we've been doing?
First of all, the, there will be physicians, position classifications, so frankly, we don't have. And they will have to be established that that individual is performing at this, this level. We don't have to go through the scoring of it, we can look at the position description. We could make a recommendation, indeed, folks could still come to you. But a part of this also is you folks, if you go with a study, you say, we've done a study, we have this mapped out, this is what it is. If you think something isn't right, you bring it in August, September, to be effective October one. That would be a companion piece. I would also, you know, the, the discussion that you were able to have tonight, the information you were able to provide regarding the Parks Director position, you could have, because we did this precise process in two thousand and nineteen for that group of employee. So we could say, we have these positions looked at, this is where they landed relative to one another out in the community. We have a scale that they can proceed on, or that they do proceed on. So that's the best answer.
So there will be no change if Ms. Smith stepped up and was doing something different in that position? They would still come?
They, they could. I would say, though, that we have not had the, we're using a tool that is now a few years old. It frankly does not apply, the reason I had asked back in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen for the other study is this tool really didn't apply and wasn't effective for positions at a certain level. But what we have right now is, and we do the best that we can in looking at comparables at the time of union negotiations, but we don't really know where we are, certainly in the way the positions are structured. We don't have structure, really, we just have positions that are out there, a long list of positions, rather than position classifications. The other thing we don't have is there has not been evaluation of our positions to determine, one, are they truly contractors? Or are they actually employees? Because if we flunked that test, there's a whole bunch of penalties that attach to that. We also don't have, are they FLSA exempt or not? And that dictates the minimum wage and overtime. I believe we have people here taking overtime that are FLSA exempt, and they should be on salary and getting no overtime. We haven't had that evaluation done. Looking at our position descriptions, I feel a little more confident there, except we are still writing position descriptions because we find position descriptions that either don't exist for positions at our system, or they're horribly outdated, and so we end up rewriting them. So this is a way also to bring all of that up.
The last time we went through this, did, was there some kind of court-specific reason that Jennifer Woods had thoughts and ideas, and we went with one vendor over, or we looked at one vendor over another vendor?
Jennifer Wood does a lot of the job of speaking for herself, I find. But, but to recap, and I think Jennifer is particularly sensitive to difficulties in recruiting and retaining employees on the court side. But if a particular vendor is selected, she would really, it has been the experience of some of Jennifer's colleagues that vendors are not really knowledgeable about courts and court systems. And so it was important to Jennifer in the courts to, if a vendor is selected, to have one that knows something about courts. If we, and that, that was the selection of MGT as the work group's top choice. But we did do some subsequent work with the, the second in order of our recommendations. Jennifer, what would you add or correct?
Well, it just, it wasn't just my recommendation for MGT, I mean, that would have been my first choice, but that was the committee's choice that we had recommended to the courts. But Tracy did a nice job of expressing what my concerns were.
A distinguishing feature of MGT is that they have direct court experience, and and some court colleagues had stepped in favor, we loved their experience.
So how many of our employees would come under this study?
Everybody except for the department heads. About a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-eight, I believe.
That's, uh.
How does that work with the union?
What should that affect the union?
I mean, top pay scales, so if you look at pay scales and whatever it's going to be. So they come back and they say, you're not paying Mrs. Smith enough money, and so we have to give her a raise. But then they say, Ms. Jones and Ms. Johnson, they're making budget.
We don't have to do anything, that you guys don't have to. They will
They're just going to know what the study said, and say, I'm underpaid, and we got, we took the study.
That's the risk of a study. Either, the risk of a study is that it's going to come back and say, you're underpaying everyone, and then there's that budget impact, and maybe we're at a disadvantage in union negotiations, except, are we? We want our people to be paid appropriately, and that's also part of the point of a study. The position we've taken in the past, if somebody, if a study comes back, we did this with the department heads, and it shows that someone is being overcompensated, we do not reduce. But we, you know, catch up, or if there's turnover, we then do the correction then.
With your study, how do you handle, how do you handle a situation like we had in the parks? I can't remember the numbers for sure, but it seems like we couldn't get people to work for twelve dollars an hour, so we had to give fourteen. And now the guys that were making sixteen dollars got mad because we give these new guys fourteen dollars an hour, and they wanted twenty dollars. And so then the parks was here saying, give them twenty dollars an hour, and we did that. I mean, how does that work?
Classic.
How does that, how does that stop?
Classic, well, first of all, they're not in, one plays off of the other, that's absolutely correct. However, one is seasonal, and the other is current employee. Seasonal folks don't get any benefits, so the compensation package is actually lower. However, if you have a classification system, and these other folks think they're underpaid, but they're in this classification, they're paid in that range, then what you could say is, no, we don't believe in adjustments necessary.
And you got the department head saying, these are my redhead guys, I want to lose them.
Look, folks, Sam, of course, that's right. But you pay people what's fair in the market. And if people think that they want to work somewhere else, and they can get work somewhere else at a greater rate of pay, we're always going to face that, always as an organization. But there's also a little bit of frankly blackmail that I've run into over and over and over in my career. Pay me more, or I'm leaving. That's about the worst argument you can make to me, because even you'd be the most valuable way of the system, and I'll say, allow me to hold the book. But, you know, the more you have a structured recent study, we're also at a disadvantage, because this hasn't been done in twenty-some years. So we really are running uphill. But by virtue of that two thousand and nineteen study, and the other systems we have in place for classification you were able to respond to the requests on the Parks Department. Otherwise, you've got this request, but not that request, you've got everybody being paid separate amounts based on those kinds of presentations. So is it a silver bullet? Probably not, but we've got to get our arms. It is our belief, it's our recommendation, that for the healthiest organization, we get our arms around this.
So is there a slide for the next step?
There is, if you choose to have me continue. What this would look like is is this an omen? Matt, I'm trying to advance this, are you able to do it from where you like? I think it's me. God has spoken. I guess. If you would like us to continue, Sheila would review with you what the procurement process was and the recommendations from the work group.
I'd make a motion that we continue moving forward this study.
With a presentation?
Yeah, exactly.
But they want to hire somebody, don't they? You need to make the motion to hire somebody.
Or, or with a higher-quality presentation, you again vote no, and we go. You can listen to me, I'm still saying no.
We, you and I have had this discussion for hours.
Circular argument.
And so shall I continue?
Yeah, I'm more than willing to listen.
Okay. So our procurement, procurement process, we did cert, Tracy reached out to other county administrators to see if they had any, any firms that they would recommend or not recommend. The RFQ, what, or the RFP, excuse me, was added to the statewide procurement site, and we were able to get eight firms that submitted proposals to us.
Matt, I think you're still on.
I can just go. So, and the review process for the work group, the work group was assembled, it was a representative work group. We had a county administrator, the county, excuse me, the county commissioner, a county administrator, the court administrator, HR, as well as the district court administrator. We identified vendor features that were of importance to the group. One of those was the timeline, how long is it going to take to complete the project? Whether there was public sector and court experience, the vendor completion and creation of job descriptions, as well as verification of FLSA compliance for the positions. So those were our, our areas of importance. The members read and scored each of the proposals using that criteria, and then we had an extensive, 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 excuse me, discussion about each vendor proposal and made the decision whether they would move on to the next round, or whether they would be eliminated. And so, as Tracy already presented on, MGT was the unanimous choice of the work group that were, that were present at the meeting. They are based in Tampa, Florida. We liked them because they had experience working with court, with the courts, and they were really the one, the standout in that area. They had a very thorough proposal, their timeline met our needs. They provided references of county projects that were of a similar size makeup. The Grasha County is utilizing MGT for cost allocation plans and has been for a number of years. They gave us a detailed breakdown of cost, and there was recommendation from other court administrators, excuse me, court administrators for class comp studies. There were positive references based on our inquiries as well.
Our second recommendation is PayPoint. Um so the cost was a little bit different. I didn't mention the cost on the last one. It was fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. The um cost for PayPoint is five thousand dollars. They are based out of the city of Maryland. They have a thorough proposal. Their timeline met our needs. They have over ten years of experience in the public sector with diverse staff experience. They would create a compensation factor scoring system which can be utilized uh by us in the future. So that kind of answers the question that you had, Sam. What if they come back to us and say they're doing all of this new work? They would be creating one of those scoring tools again for us to utilize as we go into the future. Jennifer, you had a follow-up soon meeting with representatives of PayPoint, did you not?
Did.
Now, their concern was that these folks, their second recommendation, they uh seemed to meet. Their proposal was impressive to us, but they didn't have the court experience. Can you speak with the board about um that meeting that you had with them and how they uh if they provided you reassurance that they could handle this?
Yes, they, they did provide me reassurance that they would have the tools needed to do what we were asking them to do. Uh they didn't have local work experience, which was really the only drawback, but I thought they were well educated. They didn't have a lot of public sector experience. And they seemed willing to work with us on our specific needs. So it was, it was, I liked that.
Okay, some of the factors that they use to determine comps. They use medium housing price for the local area, the median household income, cost of living locally, population, unemployment rate, labor force participation, and the proximity to Gresham County. Um so those are all can, all determined. So they're not necessarily going to be comparing us to New York, New York. They're just not. They're, they're looking at local um organizations as, as well. So they did specify that for their position descriptions, they would include the FLSA, EEO, and ADA compliance. Um not all of the proposals did, so that was something that we pulled, um pulled out because that really does help, help, help us make sure that we are meeting regulations. They also have a train the trainer guide, which would be provided for future use for internal turnover. Um so that the future administration department can still utilize these services into the future. Um they provided positive references and Jennifer and Charlie both did speak with them. Um and they were satisfied with um what they had to say, even though they did not have the specific court experience. Okay, so the next vendor was Rose Street. The cost for that is seventy-seven thousand dollars. They were the third in ranking, but we do not choose to recommend them. They are based in Kalamazoo. They had a lack of similar projects to the scope that we were looking for. Their proposal did not have a lot of detail and they had no court experience. We did have a concern about awareness of our culture. There was no reference to county or to the, or in how those interplay. Um they did have an added cost. If we wanted them to seek out what other county administrations were doing or other, other county municipalities, they would charge extra. Um because they just compare it to what they have in their system. Next was Pontefex. The cost of that was thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. We do not recommend them. They are based in Blaine, Minnesota. Um they had no similar county or court experience to what we, what we have. Um and their proposal did not meet the needs of our project. Gov HR, the cost was thirty-six thousand. Again, we do not recommend. They are based in Northbrook, Illinois. No similar county and court experience. And they did not seem to understand the overall goal of what our project is. Raymond, uh one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for their study. We do not recommend them. They are based in Grand Rapids. They had no similar work with counties or the courts. Review of, um they were only going to review our current job descriptions. Um they were not going to create any, they were just looking at what we had. There was very little reference in the proposal to classification portion of the project. And they would have caught, charged additional for any traveling that they would have been doing. Um jur, HR group, thirty-eight thousand is the cost. We again did not recommend them. They have several bases, New York, New York, Greensboro, goodness, Greensboro, North Carolina, Des Moines, Iowa, and Fayetteville, Arkansas. For their method, they compared information to their database rather than evaluating based on our local information. They were not responsive to what we put in the RFP. There was an excessive reliance on their proprietary system. They did not use any job descriptions in evaluating the possessions. And there was an additional monthly charge of four hundred dollars to use their software. There was hiring solutions, which is ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. It is based in Oak Miss, but it was going to take them twelve to eighteen months to, for the project. And we thought that that was, that did not meet our needs. So in conclusion, the recommendations from the work group was that there be a study that is completed. Some of the benefits that we pulled out of what that study would be would be minimizing the amount of reclassification requests that come before the board. The ability to retain and recruit quality talent and increase the believed fairness of the steps being evaluated at those technicals. The recommendation from the work group was, the first choice was the MGT, which we discussed, and the second choice for that would be PayPoint. So it was an acceptable alternative, although they had no court-specific experience. Sorry, that is it. Unless there's anything I missed.
Uh how long is, did, did they say how long it was going to take?
Um about six months.
So if we were to go with one of these vendors and it took them six months, did we expect in June to have a whole bunch of raises going on? Or how, how do you think that's going to pay out or play out, I should say?
Uh frankly, I, I don't know. Um if they think that we ought to be paying our folks more, then uh we would want, you folks would want to talk about that. Um if we think they just, if we think they don't have it right before the report issues, we'd be having a conversation with them. For example, you're suggesting that this classification of employee ought to be making twice what they're paying folks up in Acosta County. We'd have that conversation with them. And um so, but I, if it shows that we're underpaying people, I think the sort of philosophical decision for this board is, is it a good thing or a bad thing to find that out?
So the two recommended ones, are we talking about six month study on either one of them?
It would start almost immediately, but it would take about six months.
I'm going to make a motion that uh we go with PayPoint HR. And um I, I, my, my reasoning behind making the motion is just because every time these things come up, it just seems like such a tremendous gray area. And to figure out the right thing to do is difficult. I, it's been difficult for me. Um I, I just felt like, geez, I don't have the ability to wrap my hands around this. And uh I, I just think, you know, I'm not going to be here, but, and it's not going to happen for six months. But if I was going to be here, I would want that. So I'm, I'll make the motion. Off board.
That would be a motion by Commissioner Lumberman, support by Commissioner Bailey to option two.
Yeah.
And I'd be in favor of that also. Any further discussion?
I don't believe it's going to stop people coming. I, I, there's nobody more than me here that thinks everybody ought to make a fair wage. I, I run a small business and my folks do okay. I believe they do. And I think people work at the courthouse too. Okay. You know, I think this is a great place to work. I think the what limited access that I have with folks here as far as doing business here and things like that. I don't think it's going to stop. I, I don't want to do this because you think it's going to stop people asking. And we had this discussion. If you could move this paper to here, it'd fit in the next group. And so alls I got to learn to do was move that first paper there. And then my supervisor needs to come here and say, so you can move the papers and you get the next group. And so I don't think it's going to stop that. I don't think this is a reason to do it. But you know, I I guess just let's do it and then see where we're at, you know. We're going to be here another year or two. And so I'll be interested to see how, so.
You and me both, Sam. Any further discussion?
Is, one other question. Sheila, really, I'm not going to talk to twenty-three thousand bucks. You think these folks are going to be able to do what you need to have done in your court system? They'll give you all the information you need or whatever.
I, yeah, I mean, they did a good presentation. I can't, you know, I can't predict the future. I
Excuse me.
The thing about MGT is I know people fell through the actual process, but I, I, you know, didn't mean the big one. I, they did a nice job in their presentation. I know.
We'll put together a work group that will guide and oversee the work of this vendor. And we would have the court well represented, just as they were on the evaluation group. So if there are any points of misunderstanding, um we would hope to catch those very early.
Okay, any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote. You want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, motion passed.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I killed the note, but I'm very grateful to you. Thank you for allowing, uh, taking a level.
Okay, um before we move into the financial meeting, can we take a five minute break?
Sure.
The last one was coming from Doug Yost and Pete. Doug used the Bronx Commission, was entirely separate from you.
So.
I'm going to give up on you.
You did what the employers are. Welcome. I think this is probably a better place than this. So actually, you know, it's a smaller operation. They really kind of self-running. You know, this hospital just draw a line, somebody can see everybody above that, we got a lot.
Oh.
We can really make some lists.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
That's what I get pompous here.
There's so much more. Do you think their contract rights on the side looks the same? Because what's the next?
Yeah, that was a long time.
And you do?
Oh, no, this is, no, this is, they're, they're, it's a new one. It's a new brand new.
Yeah.
Oh. No, no, they want that stuff.
Okay.
Study, you have to craft something.
Could I get a scam? You might have to another. He said, what? I got four scam calls.
So we need to vote in the end criteria.
Let's, let's get started again then. Uh I believe I need to entertain a motion to go in the financial meeting.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Lumberman.
Thanks, Juan.
Uh any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, posnay. Motion passed. John?
All right, the Finance Committee will come to order for the Finance Board. Um we don't need to roll call or anything like that. Um Mr. Oosterhoff, take it away.
Hey, very good. Uh good evening, board. Uh we got a full gauntlet here tonight in our finance meeting that's going to include taking a look at the first draft of the general fund budget and also taking a look at the millage rates again for next year. That's a project that we put off for a couple of months that I was asked to bring back to the board tonight. To kick things off, um the Finance Director's Report. Just real quick, I'll run through the stats for you. Drain prepayments on the year, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh ARP funds, remaining unencumbered amounts, um we're looking at seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars before this meeting. Where if I took notes correctly, I believe it was uh sixty-three thousand and some change. Um HVAC unit was approved to be paid. So that will bring us down to about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh not promised to any projects. Uh one more quick note on the ARP funds project list that came to my attention after this was written. Um Jake Gregory, who is the Director of Operations at Hope House, has contacted me to let me know that um um he would be ready to come in and give you an annual report on the funds that they were able to secure and to place into savings for operations going forward because they were able to uh use our ARP funds to fund their operations this year. Um he would also be asking to amend his Um, he would also be asking to amend his contract to use. Leftover funds that he has this year for next year from ARP. Um, I told him he would have to bring that to the board and get it approved before he would do that. Uh, because the contract does specifically state that the funds were for operations for our fiscal year, which ends in September thirtieth. He is available to come in three weeks, which is our next meeting, the first one of September. Um, and that would allow him to get the contract amended before, uh, the fiscal year ends. We did add one new fund.
Chris, can I stop you just? Didn't he take both? Didn't he take all the money? Didn't they ask him if they wanted half the money or didn't we give him all the money?
We gave.
Two years of money.
We give. No, we gave him one year.
Uh, we only gave him one year.
Casa gets three.
We must have held on up. We, we, but we, we authorized X number amount, right?
An X amount for a one-year contract.
It was just one year, is that?
I, I remember him saying, I remember somebody here asking, do you want all the money now or do you wanna take part of it this year and part of it next year? And I think he took all the money. Is that, am I right?
That's the way I remember.
I, I think that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's my thought. He took it all. Yeah.
So he's informing us.
I don't know why he would have to amend the contract if he's got the money.
Well, the contract would need to be amended because it only states one year.
Hopefully he's got enough for, for next year.
So I will have to look, I'll, I'll look at what was approved.
Whatever he's got left, he's got.
If the contract does not, um, accurately reflect what the board decided that the contract would need to be amended, but that. Would be largely an administrative, uh, matter. Yeah.
Correct. Okay, I'll make a note of that and, uh, I'll make sure to. See if it was for, uh, one year operations or two years.
It was seed money for one year, I believe.
That's what I thought too. I thought it was just one year.
You can check the minutes on that.
Right. Um, either way, I, I'll, I'll report back to you, um, and Commissioner Lumberman, I'll work with you if, um, to see whether or not. We bring him in for, uh, an annual report. Because I also do remember the board did wanna make sure that, uh, this, this was a successful, successful project. To where they would have continued funds going forward when would not have to, uh, close down in certain portions of the year like they had in the past.
I did talk with him a little bit at the fair and I believe he has a good report for us.
Yes, spoiler alert, um, you will be happy.
That, we wanna be happy, yeah.
Um. Item number three, we did add a new fund into our financial system. Fund seven oh four, the Heartland Escrow. You'll remember talking about the Heartland Escrow. Um, a couple of meetings ago, they provided, Invenergy provided us with ten thousand dollars for. A list of specific expenses if they came up, um, and those expenses, uh, are buried in one of my folders, uh, at the current moment. Um. So you will see a new fund, our MERS OPEB balance. We finally have some good news with this. It's our first month in a while that we have actually gained, uh. Uh, the OPEB balance is down eight percent on the calendar year, uh, the prior month it was twelve percent. S and P. Is down twelve percent on the year. Uh, the net effect over the last thirty days or so is we, we've gained a hundred thousand dollars in this account, so. Happy to see that starting to creep back up towards a two million dollar, uh, initial seed that we put in. Um, and tonight we will be going over the general fund budget, um, as Angie has indicated, we will be having. Our opens meeting on September twentieth where, um. I am hoping and expecting that the board will pass our, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three Gresham County budget. Moving on to our cash balances for the end of July. Um. We see our general fund, COVID fund. Uh, tax sale, resident denial, they all stayed fairly flat, uh, for the month. Uh, the Delanco tax fund took a dip. Um. In July, the treasurer, uh, performed settlement services for. Uh, county funds, county millages, so, um, that's why the, the amount in the Delanco tax fund went down. I'll give you a moment to review the check register and you can let me know if you have any questions related to any checks. Uh, Commissioner Lumberman, if you let me know when the appropriate time is to continue on.
Did anything hit anybody in between the eyes?
Chris, was there anything that you saw that jumped out at you?
Um. Nothing out of the ordinary, uh, in this particular check run.
I think we can move on then.
Um, while we're talking about checks, I just wanna remind the board that. As we get towards the end of the fiscal year to submit any, uh, mileage reimbursements that you might be holding on to so that we can. Shore up the books by the end of September. Um. Our July revenue and expenditure, um. Comparison, uh, give me a moment to review that. There was one item that stuck out to me. That has since been. Corrected since this was published. Ironically, it is Fund Seven Oh Four, the Heartland Escrow. Um, some expenses were transferred to this fund and they were not supposed to. They were supposed to be in Fund Seven Oh Two, the wind farm planning fund. So you could see the, nearly the exact amount, thirty-four thousand. Um, so that will, that was moved back. There are zero expenses in the Heartland, uh, Heartland Escrow. And on that note, I can, uh, you to the treasurer for her investment. Revenue and transfers.
Hello again. Hello. I have, uh, submitted my usual reports, the distribution report and the transfers. Does anybody have any questions on those? Nothing?
I'm just gonna ask the easy question. Is there something here? That you thought was noteworthy?
No, there are not. There were, there are more transfers that you can see, um. Part of that is, is district court and, uh, their bond account. We need to do some transfers there when they come in. But that is nothing unusual, uh, just something new that you might see. As far as the transfers. I also wanted to let you know that I did receive the decommissioning and surety bond from Heartland. And I have that, um. I have included that with the other bonds that I have in, in a safe place for decommissioning on, you know, on the turbines and, and different things. So I wanted to make you aware that I had received.
In your office?
Yes.
In the safe.
Yep. In the fireproof safe. Fireproof as we can get.
All the other ones.
Yep.
Trust me.
They're all in there. There's. If anything happens to me, my staff knows where they are, so.
If anything happens to you, I know where they're at.
You know where they're at. John knows where they're at. Yeah, so we're, we're all good, so. Um. Lawyers, yep. They can find them anyway, right? Um. So yes, I, I wanted to make you aware that I did receive that, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Anything on the investment side? Anything changed there?
Not much. I mean, in the, in the. Paper, uh, we gained about four hundred dollars. But other than that, nothing. It's all flat because they're CDs and, um. They, they get the maturity as they go along, so the numbers have not changed.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, is there any homework that you need to do with our, our friend there? Like. Do we need to find out how much our services would cost if we were to? Change the way we do business as far?
Yeah, um, he is gonna send me an email with the information that he is looking for so that he can get more specific for the next meeting, um. I'm sure that'll include asking questions to the bank on things like that and.
What those costs are gonna be, make informed decisions.
Yes.
Right.
So I will have all that, or we will have all that when we come back. We're gonna try to do it for the next meeting, but if not, it'll have to be. The meeting after that because I know there's some information that's gonna be needed from Chris as well and I know that he's very busy, so we'll.
Right.
We'll do the best we can, but it'll be either the next one or the, or the meeting after that, so. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, I guess I can move into the general fund budget presentation if that's okay with you, Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. First off, I'm going to explain to you. What has changed from last year's budget to the one that I'm going to present. And then I'm going to explain to you where and how those changes have taken place. Um. The documents for this, these, I, I emailed to you yesterday morning. And. The clerk also put them up under the extras, but you'll find them under the extras of the regular meeting, not the financial meeting, if you're looking for them that way. Uh, the, the documents of importance, I'm gonna be reading off, uh, the memo that I prepared to go along with this. What I have shared on the screen right now is the general fund historic trends and highlights, and that's where I'm gonna start with. This is gonna show you. It doesn't have nearly as many numbers, but it's gonna show you what has actually changed. And then we'll get into some of the, the department numbers after that. To show you which departments changed. Um, first of all, uh, wh- when I put together this budget, we came to a, a surplus of forty-two thousand dollars. Um, now we know that. We have union negotiations coming up, um, with approximately, I believe, a hundred and. Forty-some people, maybe a hundred and thirty-some people, so. Um, in order to. Be able to have enough funds for the union negotiations, we're gonna have to find some things in the general fund. Uh, that we might not. Uh, do this year or find some alternative, uh, funding sources for them. Uh, in our prior, in the prior year, we had approximately thirteen point five million dollars in expenditures. And I'll explain why they went up this year. Two years ago, you'll see, or last year, you'll see thirteen point, or twelve point three million was the actual. And that was significant, and that's slower than what. Actually took place because we used the ARP funds. I- in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. In the air, and. When we use the ARP funds, we transferred the expenses out of the general fund into our ARP fund so that our auditors could easily identify them. So the number is lower because we used an alternative funding source. Uh, the first thing that sticks out between the two years is the revenue stayed relatively the same, fourteen point five or fourteen point six currently and, and like fourteen point eight projected. Um, when we look at the breakdown of the taxes that are coming in, we see that our real property taxes are up. About three hundred thousand dollars, um. And that our personal property taxes, which is primarily rep- is represented by turbine, uh, farms. Dropped. This is one of the first times since turbine farms have gone on the tax roll that we have actually collected less tax. Uh, from them and it is due to, uh, depreciation schedules. We did not have. Uh, a significant amount of them come on the roll this year, more depreciated than was added. And, and when we get further down, further down the line in the future, that's gonna be our trend, except we'll see it dropping, uh, a lot more than two hundred thousand dollars. Um, fortunately, we do have one more farm coming online, so that's not something that we will. Uh, witness in the next two years or, or maybe even three, but. Uh, we are gonna start to see that personal property dropping much faster than real property is going to go up. On the expenditure side, this is where we see, uh. Something that i- is really gonna start raising some questions from, from those looking at this. We're. We're going from thirteen-five to fourteen-seven. That's one point two million dollars. We need to figure out. Where that is, identify what it is and see what we can do about that. When we look at salaries. Uh, eight point two versus. Eight point eight. So there's six hundred thousand dollars of that one point, um. Two million dollar increase, so half of it's related to salaries. So what exactly in salaries is going up? And when I did my research. Um. I found that healthcare was actually one of the largest, uh, increases. From one year to another, um. Healthcare increased approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars when I budgeted it from last year, or from our current year to next year. And it. It took me a really long time to figure out why, because the amount of money that we pay for healthcare is fixed every year by the state of Michigan. Um. So when I started digging into it further. I found that when we had turnover in, over the last year. And we've had a lot of turnover, especially in the sheriff's department. With, uh, corrections officers and patrol officers. Um, and I say especially because it's a high number, like. Physical number, but we've had a, a high percentage turnover in the courthouse also. Our, um. The, the people who are retiring or leaving for other jobs typically had health insurance that was single or married coverage. And the people that they were being replaced with, that we would hire, would be families that would have family coverage, which is significantly more expensive. Um. What I also found was that a lot of the people that used to opt out of our health insurance that were covered by their spouses from other places of employment. They were now getting insurance here. And, and the more I looked at it, the more it made sense because last year is the first year in my entire. Career that I have worked for a place that has offered health insurance. Where the employee did not have to pay. Any expense, any out-of-pocket expense for that insurance. And, and we. We've become. Uh, uh, we've been. Re- recruiting people with families. People with families see that as a, a benefit that they want a- and that's just where. Um. Where the demographics of our employees has, has been going, um. So. When we move on after. And we see about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars increase in salaries. Um, that's typical steps. That's attributed to union raises that were already negotiated. Um, that's attributed to, uh, the new. Um. Salary scale that was implemented at the, um, in the sheriff's office. So that was, that was expected about a hundred thousand there, but, uh. The, the health, health insurance was, was something that I was not expecting, and, and usually. That evens itself out when you hire somebody, but because we're able to. Offer people. Health insurance for no money out of their pocket. I think it really attracted people that had families. Or it could be sheer luck. But, um. Moving on to the pension fund costs, um, our MERS contribution, our monthly. Contrib- or annual contribution is, is jumping up from two sixty to three seventy-six. Uh, these MERS contributions are calculated by an actuary department in MERS. And that amount is related to the percentage funded. Not most recently, which would have been December. Twenty, twenty twenty-one. Where we were ninety-six percent funded. That number is based on the year before, December of twenty twenty, when we were more along the lines of, I believe, ninety-two percent funded. So that's why we're, and next year we expect that to go down fairly significantly because it'll be based on our ninety-six percent funded. Um. And then when we look at our, our non-salary, um.
Chris, if you would back up just a second, and I think I ask you all the time, but I gotta ask again, when is that bond payment over? For the.
Bond, our last bond payment will be in twenty twenty-six, the last.
Twenty twenty-six, okay. Yeah, correct.
So we have three more payments left. All right, moving on to our non-salary, uh, expenditures within the general fund. Uh, we see so, we'll see some increases about approximately. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our capital projects. a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our capital projects fund or transfers to that. We will see approximately two hundred thousand dollars for drain prepayments that was budgeted in this in this fiscal year budget that was not budgeted in prior years. Uh, drain prepayments have been uh individually brought to the board in our current year to be paid out of fund balance, so that's a a difference that we see here. Um, there's some additional software, forty thousand dollars in software in I T that needs to be purchased for computers. And our juvenile court has a new program. Uh, it's, it is sponsored by the state, it's called Raise the Age. And I apologize if I get this wrong, but I believe it raises the age of being charged as a juvenile from seventeen to eighteen. Now, it increases expenditures by eighty thousand dollars, but we are also, or that's what we've budgeted for right now, but we will also get a grant from the state that will fund that by one hundred percent. So it is offset by um, but that's why we're seeing some expenditures going up now. I know that that was a lot of information, um, and the majority of it is in the memo that I provided. If you wanna go back and read that, and I can go over any of that again. But in a nutshell, that's why we are seeing a raise of one point two million dollars. Now, the next step that I'm gonna take you to, this is the expenditure budget by department, uh, a three-year comparison. Uh, this is in the budget, the Michigan Budget Act. This is the document that needs to be passed by the board to have a legal budget for our county. Um, so this is expenditures only, it's it's not revenues. So when we look at the three-year trend here, um, what I have done uh after I submitted this to the board is I went through and I identified some of the uh departments that have had significant jumps, and I just wanted to let you know what caused those jumps. If you would look, and and the way I did that is I went into the detail, uh, the the forty-five page um general ledger budget detail that is is a part of the budget book and just identified where the costs were increased. The first one that stuck out to me was uh district court. District court has jumped from nine thirty-six to nine fifteen to uh, just over a million dollars. So i- it's increased almost um ninety thousand dollars here. And the increase is is solely related to an uptick of one hundred thousand dollars for healthcare. Um, now, when I budgeted this, there were three vacant positions, and I did budget each vacant position at the maximum uh pain that the healthcare could cost us. So uh it, there is a good chance that it is over budgeted, but I can tell you that it's not going to be under budgeted. Uh, the next one that I have on my list is M S U extension, that is one oh one dash two five seven. So two five seven, that's labeled as cooperative extension in our in our general ledger. We go from one ninety-seven to two thirteen to two fifty-eight. Now, that is just simply uh budgeting the amount of revenue that comes into that program. So cooperative extension gets one-third of the egg and econ millage. And when I budget expenditures for them, I budget their expenditures to equal their uh revenues, and if they do not spend the 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 those expenditures, um, then they carry that forward in a fund balance for future use for their program. Uh, M S U is transitioning from a county-operated department to an M S U-operated services. Uh, they're looking into doing that for this year. So if you were to look at the detail for M S U extension, there will be a little overlap between how much money we are paying M S U extension for services and how much we are paying employees for services to give them a buffer to transfer over.
A question, Chris.
Yes, sir.
So the funds that the county would normally give to the extension, the state will pick up those expenses or those back costs?
The M S U extension, oh, are you talking about M S U extension or Raise the Age?
Didn't you say that that it was gonna be the extension picking? Who are you paying money to?
M S U extension?
Right, and you said that, I heard you say the state was going to transition that, or they were gonna transition to the state?
M S U is going to um is going to transition into taking over the operations for that program for us.
So will we be only, will we be just committed to the village?
Right.
We're just giving them the village, right?
It would be more of a similar relationship that we have with Greater Grashen.
So the village will stay in place, we will, the county will no longer be obligated to anything above that.
We we haven't done anything above that uh now, Tracy here. Um, it 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 is an arrangement that's very much like Greater Grashen, and then technically, we enter a contract with M S U extension each year to provide those branch services. You folks review that contract each year. Uh, it issue is a a position that has forever been a a county position on the county uh payroll. It theoretically then subject to county policies and so forth, but you, we never see that person, we have no control over that person, so uh, the discussion has been even prior to um uh the bill uh whatever Bill's last name is, I apologize to Bill. Yeah, thank you. But those, that that employee should become a part of the M S U extension system, and I I think that is finally happening. Uh, how the money shifts now, we give them the village money and um and they run the program.
So that has, that has to be worked out, but but what you're basically saying is our obligation to pay that salary well, is gonna go away?
Uh, no, we we would give them the money to run the program and they would staff it uh accordingly. Um, I, we're not going to see a difference, we're just not gonna have a position out there that's technically a county employee and all uh liability attaches to the county, but over uh which we have absolutely no control.
So really, no, it's be, it's more of an accounting function.
That is correct, a personnel um function, yes.
Okay. Understand that.
Okay.
Uh, information manager, the I or I T department was the next one that had a fluctuation uh that deserves explaining. Um, there there are two factors here, there are salary and benefits that increased by thirty eight thousand dollars, uh, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners this year. And there's also software and updates needed that were budgeted for an additional thirty eight thousand dollars. Um, and uh the notes I have for that is these are subscription fees for Office three sixty-five in our email for the upcoming year that that'll be necessary. Uh, some of these fees were rolled into the uh capital project fund in the prior year when we updated our email, but it's it's um not something that necessarily fits in there as a sa- standalone subscription fee, so it has been placed into uh the I T department. Drain commission jumping from five hundred and ten thousand to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. Uh, the difference there is budgeting two hundred thousand dollars uh for prepaid drain payments uh that would allow us to make those prepaid payments without having to come to the board for each and every one of them. The county sheriff, one point six million to one point seven million. Uh, salaries and benefits did jump a hundred and six thousand dollars, which uh explains the the entire fluctuation there. Uh, those are related to um uh steps that were were uh awarded to employees. Uh, the county jail, one point five million to one point seven four million, that's an increase of almost uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and what that is made up of, uh, salaries makes up a hundred and eight thousand dollars of that, uh, which includes two new part-time corrections officers that were not um budgeted for last year. Um, a new holiday that was approved by the board, June tenth. Um, when you wouldn't think that that would cost too much, but a new holiday does give, is an approximate twelve thousand dollar payout for the sheriff's office um, and 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 increased steps. The the jail was in an interesting uh place last year when when we rearranged the pay us the the wage scale for them. Um, the majority, I I shouldn't say the majority, but they had a lot of brand-new employees. And when we changed the the wage scale in in negotiations in the prior year, new employees did not get a raise at all. But when we come into this upcoming fiscal year, the new employees will get a five percent bump on top of uh the union negotiated two point five percent, so we're looking at a a seven and a half percent wage increase for uh many of the employees that are over there. Healthcare was increased by sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, and retirement was increased by twenty-one thousand dollars uh for a total explanation of two hundred and two thousand of the two hundred and forty thousand dollar flux. Additional items in the jail uh relate to uh medical um contracts that we need for the inmates, um, so you'll see that the price for that one up also. Next item, uh fluctuation that I wanted to cover was insurance. Um, and insurance bumped up from a hundred and forty-five thousand this current year to a hundred and ninety-five thousand um in our next year, uh, just cost increase related to claims that we've had this fiscal year. We haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't had our insurance meeting yet for our coverage next year. But I am expecting it based on feedback that I've gotten from M M R M A that we will see an increase.
Chris, is that insurance just help that you got there, or you got property and casualty too?
My my apologies, um, that is our property and casualty, um, our general insurance coverage for personnel, for computer fraud, uh, it covers all of that, yes.
Okay.
In our appropriations to other funds, there are two items that I wanted to cover in that. And for this, I wanna take you right to the detail, um, 'cause it makes more sense when you see what funds these are going to.
Chris, why did the liquor law enforcement drop?
I don't know, I I do not know how the state um I do know, I just had to think um, I believe that money comes from it comes from the state from licenses to bars and places that sell liquor, like uh one of the funding sources is if you, if a a gas station buys a license to sell alcohol before noon on Sunday.
Well, it's probably COVID then, if you look at it.
Right.
Generated through liquor license, li- li- liquor license and sales.
And 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 I don't know for a fact why i- it has dropped, but I'm wondering if places closed down because they didn't survive.
You've got a lot of them to have.
So here are some of the funds that we transfer general fund money to. We have friend of the court, eight oh one is drains, we don't transfer money to that. We have the childcare fund, you guys, y- the board has approved the childcare fund budgets. Capital improvement, soldiers and sailors, debt retirement. Um, I know some of the numbers don't mean a whole lot, so your fringe benefit fund is six, seven, eight. Two eight two is the secondary road patrol. Um, there's two of them that took a a fairly significant jump. Uh, one of them is transfers to friend of the court from a hundred and eleven thousand to a hundred and ninety-one thousand. Um, and and these are, i- it was related to salaries and benefits again for uh friend of the court. Uh, if I recall correctly, I believe two-thirds of friend of the court is reimbursed by the federal government, that money comes through the state from the feds. Uh, and then we are required to um pay for the other third of it. The other um increase that we see is our capital improvement fund. Uh, we're going from budgeting five hundred and nine thousand dollars to budgeting six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for projects next year. Now, I must tell you that one of these projects uh did not get, is not gonna be completed this year. And it will be completed next year, so it's been funded in both years, so we will essentially be using a carry-forward authorization, but it is it is the H VAC unit by the dumpsters between uh in the parking lot um that we procured approximately eight months ago that they will not be able to manufacture and install until January of next year. So we had a hundred thousand dollars, I I'm not entirely sure if we had a hundred thousand, but I we had budgeted for in our current fiscal year, the amount of five hundred and nine thousand dollars. Um, and we had to budget it again next year because uh it it did not get completed this year, so there is a a hundred and one thousand dollars added to next year's that we were hoping to get done this year. So I've showed you some of the challenges that we have in this year's general fund budget and the reasons for the increases uh and and why we don't have a a million-dollar surplus like we did in the previous couple of years. Uh, so one of the things that we need to discuss is how we're gonna free up some authorization in order to be able to have union negotiations without dipping into our fund balance to pay for those negotiations, because we do wanna have a balanced budget. It it says a lot about a county to be able to make decisions to balance their budget every year. And within the memo that I I I sent out i- and was included in the extras, at the very end of it, I put a list of items that we can consider to either uh free up some au- to free up some authorizations to to be able to uh add the salary expenditures that are are sure to come. One of the the top item would be to formally authorize the remaining A R P funds uh to be used for our county projects with, in our, in our capital project fund. I know that this has been dis- discussed extensively, but um to my knowledge, the only thing that has been done i- is a reserve was created. Um, but we didn't get actual authorization to use the A R P funds on the capital improvement projects. Another item that we could look at is identified delinquent tax funds that could be available to the general fund uh a- according to law, if there was a surplus identified in the delinquent tax fund. Uh, we could look at the capital project list for the upcoming year. We could uh remove from the budget uh the drain prepayments authorization and continue on like we have been this year, where we review each and where we review each and every one of them and determine if we want to pay for it out of fund balance. Uh we could utilize our OPEV trust fund. Uh currently, we have three hundred thousand dollars budgeted to go to the OPEV trust fund for next year to help fund our unfunded liability. Um uh if we wanted to not do that or use that pay as we go, we could utilize the two million dollars that we have in there. All right, and next year, we also have our our last payment to the delinquent tax fund from the general fund of the eight hundred thousand dollars that we borrowed three years ago to pay down uh drainage debt. Uh the treasurer has agreed if we go this way, that we could defer that payment for a year. Um but that would just be kicking the can down the road. So at this point, I would like to uh request that the board um consider some of these items i- in molding the general fund budget going forward. I'm also absolutely open to any questions.
Chris, I have a question, uh ahead of the negotiations will be done, but I mean, we'll have a better handle on what our expenses will be when we get negotiations done, how much money we're gonna need, I'm sure. You know, there's gonna be a raise involved in.
The next two Thursdays.
Yeah, I mean, two, two, three weeks, we'll know. Kind of what money we're gonna need for salaries and stuff. I wonder if we should look at it then about where we're gonna get it.
I um that would be up to Commissioner Murphy, because Commissioner Murphy likes the budget to be completely done um three weeks before you guys vote on it. And that would jeopardize me being able to do that.
If we could do it by the first meeting, I wouldn't have a problem in September.
Okay.
At that time, at that meeting, we would be bringing, uh assuming negotiations uh proceed well, we would be bringing you tentative agreements from both of the unions for board approval. So that is the date by which those numbers uh formed up and provided to that the unions gratify.
I guess I just look at it as places you can get it, but we probably don't see how much we need.
Yeah. It's a lot easier to make a decision, isn't it? A lot of this is just kicking the can down the road, is is you, well, you put off today, you gotta pay for tomorrow, so.
Yeah, you hate, I hate to not pay that insurance stuff, for that mirror stuff or whatever.
Yeah.
It's a big rate on that.
It sure is.
Okay. Does that work for you, Chris?
I will do my best.
Chris, you ready to move on to millages?
Absolutely. Okay, the last item that I have up on the finance agenda is the uh village rate review for the upcoming fiscal year. This is a continuation of of several meetings that we've had um to review the amount uh uh to to consider rolling back any of the millages for next year, if that's something that we would want to do or not. Um just to let you know, I've spoke with uh Keegan Bengal, the equalization director. A decision would need to be made at the September twentieth meeting in order for him to be able to submit the paperwork to the state on time. Um so what this what this memo provides to the board is uh three different scenarios of how the millages could be rolled back and and a bunch of the background information that we've collected throughout this year to be able to look at this. So in order to make a decision on if you could even roll a village back, one of the first things you're gonna want to know is if a village department has been able to uh put any money in the bank at the end of the year. Because if they if they can't put enough any money in the bank at the end of the year, that means they're 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 spending more than what their village brings in, or they're spending exactly what the village brings in. So if it's together, just a real quick five-year um analysis of what has been added to savings accounts each year. And and to me, that this tells the story of how how they operate. And if you remember, when Parks and Rec came and uh presented on on their village, they said that they like to save up money for big projects. And when I look at the amount added to savings each year for Parks and Rec, that's exactly what I see. I see in four of the five years, they had a significant surplus, and then one of the years they had a deficit, in twenty twenty, they had a deficit of forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh which tells me they saved up money and then spent fifty thousand dollars more than what they had saved up, you know, to that, or fifty thousand dollars more than what they brought in that year. The next thing you're gonna want to know is how much do they have in their bank account today? So an accumulation of everything that they have saved from uh the very beginning of when uh the village was approved by the residents. So I compiled that for you here. I then went and compiled a history of village collections by village department to show you how much they collect to operate on. So when I looked at giving you some potential scenarios on how to identify a rollback, I went by a couple of the year's collections, twenty twenty highlighted in orange, twenty twenty-one highlighted in green. Now, I'm not gonna pick on anybody in particular, just I'm gonna talk about COA because of the first one listed. So when I looked at how to identify what a village rollback would be, I looked at twenty twenty-one and I tried to find out what the village rate would have to be to bring in a million dollars. Pretty much, pretty close to exactly what they brought in in twenty twenty-one. And then I looked at what the village would have to be to bring in eight hundred thousand dollars, which is pretty much what they brought in in twenty twenty. And then just for a third option, I popped in exactly in between them to see what the military rate would be for nine hundred thousand dollars. And then just as a refresher to show you, the current COA military rate is point six four nine two. So that is kind of how I went through this exercise to to um show the board how I would assess this, if I were to assess this and make a decision.
So on the commission on aging, Chris, it looks like about every six hundredths is a hundred thousand dollars. So if we left it at point six four nine two, they would be closer to one point one million.
You can see right up there on the screen, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Um one point oh eight, one point oh nine projected. So at this point, um I'd like to entertain uh any discussion and any further um assistance that I can provide. Uh in this mock-up, I did uh estimate what the reduction in taxes would be for the residents, for the different scenarios, you can see that um in a yellow highlighted role from scenario one, the possibility of five hundred and sixty-five thousand all the way to scenario three of a hundred and eighty thousand.
Chris, do we have the ability to treat different entities differently?
Yes, you can, you can identify, you you can ident- or treat each village differently. Now, if you were the the econ and ag village, you could not treat greater grass and MSU extension differently, you would have to treat them the same, because they're the same village.
Right, right, okay.
Now, for the libraries, you can't treat each individual library differently because there is a contract and how to split that up. Each library would be affected the same percentage, what base.
But having said that, Chris, like road patrol, I, in my personal opinion, we should not even touch road patrol, because they spend just about everything they dig in. But let's say uh COA, if we got it down to the the point five-five or the middle one, the white, nine hundred thousand, can we do that? Can we keep, in other words, can we keep one village, a lot, leave one village alone and take something away from another village?
Yes. And if you do this, it is only for one year. You have to revisit it in the next fiscal year.
In the next fiscal year, if we don't revisit it, it automatically reverts to the old village?
Uh Keegan will bring it back to you again, he will bring it back to you and ask you to sign the full village or a reduced village.
In other words, we said it each time.
Yes.
I I I thought about this earlier today, and I thought, boy, you know what, be honest, in my opinion, I'll just put it in the middle. Then the more I think about it, we're looking at our own budget and how much our own budget has increased due to inflation, due to wages, and due to everything else, so we're we're going into uncharted territory here.
Looking at health insurance.
Yeah, we've got, and and the factors that hit us also hits the people that are getting the mileage, I mean, they're they're they have to do the same thing, they have to pay their people, they have to to look at all those different things.
I guess when I look at the mileage of the libraries, I mean, there's, I think we have a wide spectrum of libraries in the county. I don't know if you took the same amount away and everybody got a little less. Would it would it hurt a smaller library more than, say, like the city of Elmer or, you know, the library down here? You know, you take, what does Ashley has, theirs in their school or something, even a building, I think, you know, would it hurt them more?
And I'm sure they have a a a formula, but I have no clue what that formula is.
Well, they they get some type of cut out of the village, but.
Is it a certain percentage? So yeah, if you if you drop, if you drop the mileage, the the guy that's been getting more is gonna get a little bit less, but the guy on the bottom doesn't get much, and good, gonna get even less than that. It's complicated. Because if you look at the library themselves, they got huge fund balance.
Yeah, they were sitting with two million in cash.
So that's almost as much as they've collected in the last five years.
How did they decide, I know they've had, we had them in here, how did they decide to do anything with that money? I mean, do they decide, you know, I know like I know the one little village asked the parks for some money, and they said, oh, they're out of the wrong date, they got a million bucks, you know? They tried to redo a park.
They all want to build new libraries. All the libraries want to build a new building.
No, they don't. It's well, sitting in a new one, we almost sitting in a new one.
Spending them. I've never heard that, like, down in the southern, like, with Ashley or and they're in the school, and they use the school for everything there. I mean, I'm just amazed, what an agreement, uh the county or whoever has it, schools.
Well, we've got.
They have it at the school, you know, in the summertime, it's just.
I think we should make a decision by next meeting, but I sure would like to reach out to some of these and or all of the entities and say, make an argument. Go ahead, I don't know, he was the chairman.
Well, actually, John's right now.
Oh, John is, yeah.
Yeah, um Casey just pointed out. Casey and uh we'll run some numbers just to give you a little frame of it, the same, little bit different than what Chris did, where Chris talks about reduction to residents, that's all real property. That's a resident, if you have a business or anything else, but we kind of looked at it as residents, mean residential, you know? Taxpayers, just not businesses, so just the residential. And it's just about dollar for dollar, what I mean by that is, for every dollar you give a cut to residential, you're giving a dollar cut to.
DTE, Exelon, and Consumers Energy.
So it's a pretty good leverage, the other direction that you're getting here, so for every dollar you charge them, thank you know, every residence, you know, like in the case of mine, I just took my own house. And I'm, I think we said the median taxable in the counties about fifteen, fifty-five, I'm at a hundred. So I'm double, I know I'm way over that, the savings to me on the greatest one is fifty-five bucks. So I also know, okay, I get a fifty-five dollar, and I'm not, and I've never been, just went through the whole village process with everybody, and I understand, you know, it's a little, it's not five-dollar gasoline, right now it's five-dollar diesel. So that, you know, every dollar means something, something to everybody, but by the same token, the leverage that we get out of it locally that comes back out of here is, you know, we're given, in in the theory, every dollar you give back, you're almost giving a dollar to Detroit. Because DTE and Exelon, you know, aren't even located in our, and so that that's just what you have to remember here.
That's nasty.
Because that's really what's happening. So just to keep it in that.
That's where this excess money is coming from, is the valuations, putting more stuff in, it's not, we're not raising tax, I mean, except your house is probably undervalued, but. But you know, I I just think you you're right, you're looking at these dollars, they're really coming from more production windmills coming on, and probably three million bucks a pop.
And that's, that's where the big, yeah, there, I mean.
Drop that, and if, yeah, they don't have to pay that much, so that goes right back in their pot.
Yeah, and it's almost dollar for dollar. Yeah, so it's like, for every dollar I give the village, I I almost get another one from them.
Yeah, that's a great point, that is a great point.
I didn't like it.
Okay, I've heard that one before too, my wife says that always.
Yeah, we'd be happy to share this.
We have split millings, we charge them more and us less.
I don't think that one works.
Yeah, I don't think we could do that.
We have to get some lawyer doing it.
All right, well, you just stuck dipping Debbie down in the whole thing, all right.
So so we'd have to do something on this by the next meeting, is what.
Or not, or not, and I think right now, send him in the room, he just, he just popped the balloon, is what he did. What's his rightfully so?
Valuation of his place was one.
Yeah, if you, if he paid all, if he paid all what he's supposed to pay, we'd be all right. All right.
Chris, do you have anything else to present?
No, I do not.
I think uh uh oh uh Matt, do I have to ask for public comment?
I have an answer for you on the Hope House, I approach.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
I looked them up while we were sitting here. So it was November second of last year's minutes, and what it says is Hope House requests for ARP funds, board motion, board action motion by uh Mr. Bunning, signed it by Mr. Lemberman, request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Grash County Hope House, doesn't say year or few years.
That's what the minutes reflect.
Your proposal.
In their appendix, it shows that it's for the fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-one to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, that whole dollar.
Okay, yeah, the the minutes don't reflect that, so.
No, but I would.
But it refers to their presentation, which that's what they have in there.
I, what I'm reading into this, they did not spend all those funds. Correct, and is that right, Chris?
I I don't have confirmation of that, but that's one of the reasons I wanted to bring them in here.
I I think, I think we're both on the same page is that we gave them money to fund their Hope House for a year.
Yep.
And I think I'm I'm making some assumptions here, but I assume they put some money in the bank and they haven't spent that money.
Well, my understanding is, is they were able to get some grant money that they weren't expecting. Get some grant money that they weren't expecting that had to be spent. In this current fiscal year.
Right.
They did bank some of the ARP money while they spent some of this grant.
Oh, right, and I think that all all they need is, and I, where's Tracy there? I think all they needed, and I think you're right, it it's just a. A clarification in eh eh in the uh. Oh, what do I say? Yeah, just the the wording itself.
Amendment.
Amendment, there you go, amendment to what they wanted.
That would be something I would need the board to vote on.
Okay.
So, Chris, just mechanically. If they've got forty thousand, if they've got forty thousand, they haven't spent, does that mean we still have? At forty thousand, because they have not turned it. Haven't turned in a a receipt.
No, for for operations, I I have allowed lump sum payments. For Casa and for Hope House, because they needed those funds in order to operate, I made a lump sum payment to them. For projects, I've required receipts.
Okay, hey, thank you for that.
I think they just need to.
So, Chris, with that, we give them all the money that they asked for though, right?
Right.
Both years.
One year, we only gave them.
For the year.
How much did you give them, you know?
Uh, I'd have to look in the project list, but it sounded like two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, I'm sorry, misheard you. Two hundred fifteen thousand.
So they got four hundred?
Two hundred and fifteen thousand.
That was the total amount they asked for.
That is the total amount, yes.
And you, and you, that was a two-year deal.
No, one year. A one-year deal. It was to hope, it was on their entire operation for a year. And in the meantime, the way I understand it, in the meantime, they had gotten grants. And they had a time-sensitive grant that they had to spend the money. So they took the money that we were giving, we gave them, and they put it over in a. Aside, in a bank account. All they're asking us to do is amend. So they can go on to the next year. Which. Quite frankly, I don't see a problem with it, because they they're spending their money right, but.
Matt, do you have anybody on for public comment?
No, I do not.
Okay, so without objection, we'll consider the finance meeting adjourned, go back to regular session.
Okay. Make a motion for the finances.
Very good, uh, motion by Commissioner Bailey to approve the financial report, uh, second. Like Commissioner Smith. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion passed. Uh, anyone wanna make additional public comment? See anybody online, Matt? Nope, I don't. Okay, then I believe we're looking for a uh.
In a motion.
Motion to go into uh.
Close session.
Executive session.
Good catch. And it wouldn't know what.
Go into closed session to discuss up and coming union, union negotiations, not gonna bother to read the whole thing.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey then. Second. By Commissioner Lemberman. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion passed, we're in executive session.
We would ask them that.